Hello, we are about to start. We are starting in five seconds. I think we're live. Welcome, everybody. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with our planning commission to have this joint work session to discuss the draft of the general plan. Thank you all for being here. We put a lot of time and thought in as you guys have, and we just really appreciate all of the support that we had on this project. I will turn the time over to Melinda.
Okay, I have a very brief presentation tonight. I just wanted to go over the general plan as it has evolved since January 20th and since I've been involved in it. So on January 20th, we had a joint city council planning commission workshop. And at the end of that workshop, we were directed to go back and do a little bit of work on document to kind of simplify it, make some edits. We contracted with a company that does strategic communications called X Factor and spent about $12,000 to get that done. And then we have transformed what was the 21, 2021 plan into what we hope will be the 2022 plan. Whatever year we adopt it is the year we will call it is the plan. So the 2022 general plan, and I just wanted to go over some of the changes that were made. And then I'll point out just a couple of, I think, more than more significant changes, just so we can be as transparent as possible as to how this evolved. But we, and essentially what we did to keep some of the costs down, I did a lot of the work with just reorganizing the document. And then the consultant is the one that actually, or I directed the work the consultant did. So we reorganized some of the chapters and some of the wording within the chapters to have a better flow and comprehension for reading. We eliminated the sixth chapter, which was all of the goals in one chapter, and included the goals at the end of the chapters with their relevant content. We also simplified some of the data charts and tables. Some of those were removed. The parks master plan is now a completely separate document. That in itself eliminated, I think, over 60 pages. And then we changed it from portrait orientation. I think that along with some of the other reformatting is, makes it a better document to read. It was 168 pages, we're now down to 90. And then the appendix still has some needs. I, we did not include in our scope of work with the consultant to reformat the appendix. So what we, what we will do is take those five or six pages that are labeled as an appendix at the end, include those into the comprehensive appendix that was part of the previous plan. And, and that'll be the entirety of the appendix, but we haven't gone to that point yet. One of the major changes that we made was we previously had 10 different guiding principles. You can see those here and then on this next page. We condensed those into five guiding principles. We removed the parks specific ones, eliminated obvious principles, like there was one that was titled strategic planning. I think that's kind of the whole point of a general plan, so it didn't really make sense to have that in as a guiding principle. And then we combined some of the related principles. So it shows an example here and on the next page where we had two principles that were very closely related, improving our mobility, connecting to our neighbors. So we combined those. And then same with the creating a beautiful city center and enriching our downtown. They're kind of one in the same, and so we just condensed those. And that gave us the total of five instead of 10, which is, I think, a better number to deal with going forward. We also had, as I mentioned, we put the goals at the end of each of its respective chapters. Previously, it was all the goals, it was just a chapter of goals. And so it now, it now flows, I think, a little bit better. You read the content, you go into the end of each chapter that has the goals and policies. Real quickly, I just also wanted to go over two requests that we have had with the future land use map. And, and then I'll turn the time over to the council and the commission to kind of just really dig in and have a dialogue about the next steps. But we had two property owners that have come and asked that we make changes to the future land use map. And one of those is the Flints that own the property directly north of Smith's on Flint Street, they would like to see that changed to mixed use. Right now, it's slated to be a single family, which is the yellow it shows there. And the other request that we had, this is the parcel outlined in red, and Symphony Homes owns a portion of that. The Equestrian Center owns the other portion, but they were interested in having that be shown as multi-family on the future land use map. So you decided whether or not that change is appropriate, but I wanted to point those two things out.
Can I ask you a quick question? Where does, where does the West Davis corridor run in relation to this? Because that would somewhat affect that also limit. Because isn't it right on the western edge of that?
Yeah, that's what they were complaining about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that could be an influencing criteria. So that is really all that I had. I, I'm happy to answer any questions about, you know, the reformatting or content. We really got the message from the council and the commission in, in February that there wasn't a whole lot of questions about the content itself, but just kind of the, the readability of the document, the length and the size. And so hopefully, we accomplished what the council asked us to do. And really, just would like to turn the time over to the council and the commission to have a dialogue about the plan as it sits and then what the next steps should be.
Thank you, Melinda, appreciate that. So in, in this discussion and in this meeting, the reason that we had it, I think it was requested from council and from planning commission at some point to sort of meet jointly, to just be able to have a work session to discuss what we've accomplished, to, to express appreciation for all the hard work as well, a lot of time and effort has gone into this, and also to get to the point that we can, we can adopt the general plan. This is, this is the goal. So the purpose tonight would be to have a discussion, ask questions, make sure that, you know, we understand it and, and it reflects what we want it to reflect, and then we, it'll go to council for decision at that point. We, we know planning commission starts at seven, so we do have a hard stop. That being said, it is a work session, so feel free to speak freely and let's, let's get it done.
And I have the plan pulled up, so if you wanted to reference a specific page, I can go to that page, so we could all be looking at the same thing.
As you're thinking about what you might say, I will just add that I really, I like it, I love, I love it, actually. I think it's, it's exactly what the council, at least from my perspective, what we, what we said we wanted to see, we wanted to see it shorter, more condensed. It's cleaned up, so it's great as far as that goes. The content, in my opinion, is, hasn't changed substantially, so I'm very comfortable with it. Melinda, I do have a question. So on the areas that might change, would that just be an internal discussion and then we will, it'll come to council presented however, or, or at council, do we have a discussion about that changing?
So my thoughts on that are if there's anything that's like a technical edit, there were a couple of questions about spacing, you know, just let me know what those concerns are and we can make those final, final edits, you know, if there's, happens to be misspelling. If it's something that's content related, I think a discussion here would be great. But then in the end, it is the council that adopts the plan. So if the council felt the need to do another work session to hash out some of that or just put it to action, and then we'd want to have in the motion those changes. For, for example, if-
At, at council, so it would, the draft won't change before it gets to us? So as, as council, then we would say, okay, well, this has been requested, how do we feel we'll have discussion at that point?
Yeah, if there, if there were enough head nods tonight that said, hey, yeah, we agree with the Flints request and the request from Symphony Homes, we want to make that change to the future land use map, I would bring that back when we bring that to the council for that final discussion. If, if there's enough consensus tonight, I think that we could definitely make those changes before we bring it back to the council. If there needs to be further discussion on the council as to what the final content or the final draft would be, then we can address that. Really, because the council's the one who adopts it, it would, it would be your prerogative. Does that, does that sound?
Well, since we don't have a whole council here to discuss, we're missing a couple people, so I guess really the perfect thing would be to have a discussion and then we can talk about it again.
And realistically, as I've gone through here, I've written down some questions and having spent the last two weeks out of here, I still, I just want to, I'll come by and talk with you guys, just, but you know, a couple of questions, can I ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, because one question is, so what's the next step? And I mean, you know, my question ends up being like on page 18 and 19, where, you know, we talk, you know, introduction of new land uses, replacement of car oriented roadway, new patterned streets. So what's our next step then as a city? And how do you implement this kind of stuff? I mean, I read through here, I, I'm, I'm good with 98% of them. You know, I got a couple of questions, but what's our next step as a planning commission and city council for enacting or prioritizing and going down? I just don't know.
So this feels like this is a, a resource or tool for the public, which it is. But really, what this document does is it tells me and my department how to do our jobs. In some instances, it tells us, it tells us what our job is. But mostly what happens is, is it, it allows us to have a more informed dialogue with people when they come in to, or they call and say, hey, I have this property and I want to develop it. What does the city want to see there? And, and that is the question we get the most when people have a property they want to develop. And the first thing I would do as staff is I would go in with this future land use map and I would say, like, you're calling for this property to be used as single family. It is designated as single family. So if we need to do a rezone, that's in line with what we would want to do. If their request was not in line with anything in this plan or with that future land use map, then it's a different conversation. So I think really, while this feels like it's a tool that's for the public, and it is, this is, this is a combination of all the public's input over, right, it started in 2019. It's a combination of, and a culmination of all that input, the thoughts of the planning commission, the thoughts of even previous city council members that aren't, aren't here anymore. And, and it's kind of just this funnel down into, hey, we agree that in general, this is what we would like to see out of our community. It doesn't mean that this is what we have to do. It doesn't mean that this is what we're going to do, but it means these are some ideas, this is the direction we'd like to see it go in. And, and it really is, then if somebody does have a request that doesn't fit in, we go back, and if you've read some of the staff reports we've had on rezones, what, what I would do is I would go back and I would look at these guiding principles that we have and say, does this request fit in with the guiding principles? Is it going to enrich the downtown? Is it going to help better connect neighborhoods? Okay, then let me look at the goals. And if it fits in with goals, then it would get a positive recommendation from staff to have it approved. If it doesn't, it would get a negative recommendation. But I think one of the things that I've learned over the course of my career and Wolf, with his background, and Steve could, could say this as well, is that this is very much open to interpretation. And so just because it's in here doesn't mean we have to do it. If it's not in there, it doesn't mean we can't do it. I hope, that was a long answer, but I hope that kind of answers. But, but this is really, this is really what informs us as staff as to the job that we need to do.
So, and I guess as a follow-up, so as staffs then are doing budgets, because a lot, you read through here, everything that goes cha-ching, cha-ching almost every, here's what we want to do. Does that, is that how we should potentially plan, you know, or prioritize or, I don't know, I just?
It's a good guide for it. It's a good guide to help you prioritize what, what you want to do and what you want to spend money on.
Having been on the staff side of that also, as you look at your growth and what you're going to be facing, I mean, you're, you're not a new city like a Saratoga was 20 years ago. You're, you're starting into the, into the infill and that redevelopment. You may look at staffing differently and hiring staff, and I would say that from the planning commission side, I would definitely budget for more staff. Because where you're headed is going to need, is you're heading into that infill rezoning part, where that is, it takes time, it takes more staff time, you know, whether it's part time or full-time person, but you're going to need some more staff to come do that. It's, it's labor intensive to get into that stuff. And, and you know, looking in the future. So you're, you're asking the right questions. From the, I worked at the county side on this and we worked through county general plan, and it's, it's similar. I mean, but it guides, it guides how you look at your three and five-year budgeting and also how you're looking at future land use for transportation. So when you're going down to WFRC and talking about the STIP and the State Transportation Improvement Plan, this guides where those transportation funds are going to be coming. And so if you have projects here in the city that you want to do, you know, what is that? What is our corridor going to look like on 200 North in the next five years? And how are we going to get the funds to do that? I mean, that, those are some of the discussions. Where do we want our economic development to really be focused? I mean, how are we going to redevelop our downtown? So as you're thinking about that and thinking about growing your tax base as a council, this guides that conversation.
Just a real quick question. The definition of a general plan, and some of you guys can answer this, is that, is there like a, is this what we made the definition to be? Or is it a state whatever? I'm just curious how we got the definition of this general plan?
The definition that's in the document, you mean?
Yeah, again, it says, what is the general plan? The Caseville City General Plan is, et cetera. Is that something that we have flexibility, what we make of it with the city council? Or is that guided by what principles?
General plans come from the state. The city, the city has to have one, per its charter. But unlike other states, ours is a guideline, it's not fixed in stone how it's set.
And the reason I ask that is I-
Except for public properties and public uses. It is, it is mandatory for public, public property, public uses.
And the reason I ask that is I, you know, sometimes I take it from a business and sometimes from a military perspective. If you give me a list of things that you wish, you know, the commander's intent, really, that's, but basically, you, you know, whether the commander is the city council, the mayor's office, et cetera, then it's a guiding principle. And in answer to council member Oaks, because that's a good question, what exactly are we using this for? And I think from just reading this literally, not taking any liberties with it, it's, again, right there it says for the public to understand, evaluate future needs. But then I also think about some, some of the things that we've talked about in the past is that, you know, we're looking for redevelopment. And if, if an outside investor is looking at it, where do they go first? I'm assuming it's the general plan and then they call your office and they talk about it, I'm assuming, so.
First thing they'll look at is zoning, what the current zoning is. Ideally, I think, you know, as a planner, you would say, well, your zoning ought to reflect what your plan says if you're serious about your plan. But technically, it doesn't have to. But as a planner, I'd say, sure, I mean, yes, let's make our zoning in the community consistent with what our plan says. Oftentimes, that's not the case, at least not completely. And so then sometimes people will come in and ask for rezonings of property. That's generally when you get new development proposals. And if it's not consistent with what the zoning currently is, they may ask for a rezone. And at that point, then we look at the general plan and say, well, what does the plan say we should be doing? And we'll generally, I think, make the recommendation to say, you know, we ought to follow the plan. But, I mean, you don't have to, first of all, under state code, you're not required to follow your plan, except for public properties and public purposes. So, you know, wherever you're going to locate some public facility or something, it has to be consistent with your plan. And then, but you would then say, well, let's think about changing the plan or, you know, situations may have changed over time. Since you adopted the plan, things are really different. And, and then you may say, well, we haven't had time to go back and readdress our plan yet, but we can make the change, may, even if it's not consistent with our plan at this point, because things are different. And when I say different, I, I would point to something like, you know, just within the last couple of years, this whole housing affordability issue has just exploded. And, and that's different than what was the case when the plan was originally adopted. So we're addressing it now with the plan change, I think, but it's a change you could make without having to be consistent with the plan.
And I also remember that the main reason for this joint session is because we as a, the planning commission, and I remember there was a time, I think there was one meeting where one of the council members asked, like, you know, how are you guys, you know, what are you guys looking at? And so we would say, the general plan, you know, that that's our guiding principle, which, you know, is a, I guess, a joint effort, but we need to kind of get an idea. And that's the reason for this joint session is, you know, we're, we're not trying to make things up, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're trying to ask you guys, hey, what does a city council and the mayor, what are they looking for? Because you guys are the elected representative. So I think that, that's the other thing to think about is for you guys also tell us, hey, you know, talking to my constituents, this ADU thing is whatever, but I think that's what we're looking for here. And then if you, you know, obviously, a lot of you listen to the meetings, that's one of the things that we'll always reference is the general plan states that this and that. You know, we will still make some decisions sometimes that are not necessarily goes with the general plan, but most of the time, I think, if you look at the record, nine out of 10 times, we kind of followed the general plan. And we needed an update just because of how things have changed literally since the pandemic. So I think that's the main reason, too. So I mean, yeah, I, I think that's a great question is like, what's the next step? What issues do we need, because we've been working on this for quite some time. There may be some minor things, whether it's the font, the layout, et cetera, but I mean, do we think there needs to be any major changes or commissioners on asking you?
I have some suggestions on substance. The short answer I would also give to that is the document is both a, a tool for reaction. So when a landowner makes an application, how do we react and apply the standards in here? And it's for the council and to some extent, the commission and the staff to say proactively, what are we going to do? I mean, if you look at the goals and policy, or goals and, and, you know, what do they say, goals and policies, yeah, in each section, there's probably a dozen, maybe dozens of instances that says implementation measure, modify existing ordinances to do XYZ. That's one way that the city should be doing it, I think. Because we, we remember that this is a document that was, hopefully, and I think it was to a large extent, guided by what the citizens want. That is implementing what the citizens want. So anyway, I, I mean, I have some substantive questions or comments or suggestions if we want to go to that.
Yeah, why not?
So, and there's, as I always do, in no particular order. I look at, there's a number of, of maps. If we just look at the city center preferred concept map on page, or on, which is map 2.4 on, I don't know what the page is, because my, mine doesn't have pages. It's earlier on, it's in, yeah, map 2.4.
Our printer settings have a problem and they are cutting off the bottoms of pages.
It's in the land use and place making plan section. Yeah. So I, I've had, I've kind of struggled with this because it's been on every map in this whole process. Yeah, right there. Okay, so if you look where it says 200 North, there's that triangle piece where, you know, Vasa is and FIZ and the, the post office. I'm not so much opposed to say that that's going to be a community hub, but the, but the trail greenway and later the parkway that cuts right through there, that's just not going to happen. At least not in the next third or 40 or 50 years that I could see. Because for that to happen, that whole triangle piece has to be developed with all of those property owners in there either selling or agreeing to the development. One of them is the federal government. I just don't see that happening. Yeah, so if, if, I think we should make changes and propose things that are going to be practical and more or less likely to happen. I just don't see that that would be happening. So that's maybe minor, maybe major, I don't know. I don't think we should propose it cutting through there. Because not only that, are we going to make a five-point intersection at, at Main 200 North? That, that dashed line on here shows it's a trail greenway and another map, it shows it as a proposed parkway, as a road with a median in the middle of it. So anyway, I know this is general and I know maps are very loosey-goosey, so to speak, with general plans, but I think we should revise that part.
Would you eliminate the whole thing, Josh, or just?
No, no, I think, I mean, I think a large part where, especially where it gets up into the, you know, the, the part, you know, on the other side of Holmes Creek, that's fine. And even to some extent, where the IHC and Les Schwab property is, that seems to make sense. And then even as extends through there seems to make sense. It's just that triangle piece where the post office is, that's the big issue. I like, kind of like the idea on the other parcels of it being there, so not taking out the whole thing. And some of my questions are just suggestions for the council to chew on or to think about or whatever in their meeting before they adopt this, meetings maybe. But related to that, if you go to, I don't know what page it is again, there's the Parkway Street. It's got the, it's got, it's this page, it's got the street sections. And it mentions the Parkway Street. You know, figure 2.4, which is North Main Street, and figure 2.5, North Main Street, potential long-term. You know, it has a median in there, it has, you know, multimodal street, all, all I think are good, good things. I don't know the answer to this, and maybe it's long under the water under the bridge, but has, has Public Works looked at this and said, you know, median's in the middle of, of the right of way, we're good with that, yes, that looks great, trees in there, that looks great. I like the idea in concept, I just don't know if-
We, we have had some meetings with UDOT and Public Works have been involved, because that would be, you're talking about Main Street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
This is North Main Street, right?
It's north, north of 200 North.
Which has room.
Okay, over there by Tissus.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Never mind.
So 200 North and Northern Caseville City Boundary. Yeah.
I don't, I honestly don't know the answer to that question. Dan, do you know, was Public Works involved in this or Shane, do you know?
I believe they've tried it out.
Yeah, I think that they've had discussions about it, I don't know that they said, oh, this is absolutely worth-
I would imagine that there would have been some type of involvement. I would hope there would be. But, but also, I, I don't think we really have one, but each municipality should also have like a street's master transportation plan. And we have our active transportation plan, but we don't have an overall streets plan. And that's really where I think you get more into the, the real details of street standards and widths and those type of things.
Are you suggesting it's a kind of an unrealistic expectation and we should change it or?
I mean, I don't know if it's unrealistic. I'd be surprised to see it happen in the next 10 or 20 years. I think it would be a fantastic thing if it did happen, but it's, but it's going to be expensive and, yeah.
To chime in, having seen this concept come to fruition in another community, so down in Utah County, it takes a lot of effort to get there. So now driving down in Provo and American Forks, so yeah, when you, when you drive down there now, you have this type of street. But what it took was the mayors, the city councils and their association of governments working with the federal, I mean, it took, it took a lot of time and there was a lot of public pushback. And I think it took them, they said about 20 years. But, you know, it works, but you've got, you, it can't just be Caseville coming, I, this is my opinion, but I think Caseville has to work with Lake, you're going to have to work with the other cities to work somehow on a regional transit. That's how these usually come together, in my opinion, because they get expensive.
So maybe instead of saying potential short term, it should be long term, because I, I like the concept of this. And again, North Main Street, it's only from 200 North to the northern Caseville City Boundary, it's a short area. But I, I think, you know, when I, when I look at the general plan and I look at, okay, here's where we are today, short term, midterm and long term, that's kind of a cool idea. At least it gives you the idea. And like I said, this, this paragraph is perfect. It says- It says that, you know, this is not highly used. So this versus South Main Street actually has the ability to be transformed now. Like you said, like I said, whether it's in five, 10 years, 15 years, we don't know. But at least it gives us, again, whether you want to call it a wish list, guiding principle, but it's, it's possible. And like you said, it's, it's possible.
And, you know, getting, I'll go back. I mean, you look at the BRT that's now proposed down in North Salt Lake and those communities, that's going to take some time. You've got Centerville and those mayors, from Centerville all the way down through North Salt Lake is connecting Salt Lake. That's another 15-year project. And this is a similar type of roadway they're proposing through there. It'll widen and it'll improve that. So I think if that's the type of concept, I think there's going to be a regional effort that will have to happen with that.
And I would like to keep it too. Just I remember from one of the meetings, the Romneys talked about they wanted to rezone their property to mixed use. And if you have this vision and whatever they want to do in the long run, it, I think it matches that.
I think one thing you have to acknowledge though is there was public comment about being concerned about slowing of the traffic.
Right.
And, and so that's something you need to take into consideration too, that, I mean, you have some competing goals here. You know, I think this concept was not necessarily thinking of the traffic slowing issue.
So it also allows for transit and, you know, multimodal, which is the term, which would allow for some different types of development to come in the city. So I mean, we're a little off topic, but that's what, that's what this is developing towards in the future.
One thing to keep in mind too is that a lot of, a lot of this content or these ideas that are in here won't happen or pieces won't be completed until development or redevelopment takes place. And for the most part, the market dictates that. The city doesn't go and dictate unless we fund it ourselves, right? And so, you know, there's an example, the Fire Clay area in Marie, they've been working, it's TOD zoning, the transit oriented development or design. They just are in the process of getting the final leg of a pathway that goes through that entire area. There's a track station, but it's taken 20 years. And it's that final piece of property that's finally developing. But the, the general plan calls for the trail designation, right? They have all of these pieces in place, but then when that property owner comes in and says, hey, I'm finally ready to do a project here, we say, okay, but here's all the things that as part of your development, you'll need to put in this pathway. So these things do take time and there are a lot of moving parts and moving pieces. And so some of this is going to be kind of pie in the sky type of dreams that may or may not ever come true. But they certainly won't if there's not a vision for that.
Yeah, agreed. This is aspirational.
Yeah.
Something that we would like to see, hope to see, maybe someday we'll get it.
So the, the difference between 2.4 and 2.5, and I'm looking at the, like, whether it's six feet for the sidewalk or eight feet, again, explain to me the difference? Because, I mean, yes, I do see 2.5 talks about, that paragraph says transit service, but I'm trying to figure out what the difference is and why it would be different with 2.4 and 2.5. I mean.
Is it separating bike lanes?
It looks like you have the, you have the development that is up to that sidewalk. It's right, right now, it's not there, it's setback.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, I see. You're right, the building in the car, got it, okay.
But I think you end up with like Main Street type of lanes.
Right, yeah.
Well, and you're taking out a, you're taking out a.
A lane.
Travel lane.
Yeah.
In exchange for a bunch of other.
Got it.
Components of the right of way.
But don't take out the dairy.
I agree.
Rebuild it.
No, I mean, in that case, then it, it makes sense. You know, again, like, like I said, I, I think back at that meeting that the Romneys were here where they said, yeah, we would love to see it rezone. We would take out that parking lot, mixed use, et cetera. So this would help in that vision, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so there is a difference, this on the other, on 2.5, this is eight, seven, seven, two and a half. You know, so, but, but you make those nominal adjustments and then all of a sudden you can have.
Right.
On both sides or, you know, so that's, I mean, that's one difference I can see. But yeah, it looks like this is only.
Right. One lane, yeah. So I think when I look at this, it's visually confusing. So maybe put the, because 2.5, again, this is semantics, but figure 2.5 falls under the future North Main Transit Service paragraph, and that's where I almost got confused. So maybe put 2.4 and 2.5 up there with the North Main Street transformation to show what it's like the first 2.4 without development and then 2.5 with the development. Now it makes sense.
Well, and it does say short-term plan and long-term, but maybe we can.
I would almost even say. Without development, like, like you pointed out, that was great. Without development, or, and then the other figure says, instead of long-term, just says with development.
But I, I didn't see it until I looked at it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it doesn't pop.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly. But I think that's why having it maybe one after the next or even next to each other. Again, I'm just talking about semantics and visual, from a visual perspective. I mean, if you didn't figure it out and I didn't figure it out, then. That's a great, yeah.
I got something that I don't know if I should or keep my mouth shut. But the else that I'm seeing in that room with that is that Kyle Anderson property, still undeveloped. And you don't know how that would affect the development of that, something like that too. You'd probably consider that before that was gone. Because that is like our biggest commercial ground we have left. That something like that could blow something potentially big coming in or enhance something to come in. That's another thing I would consider about something like that.
That parcel Dan's talking about is, is the big triangle piece that abuts I-15 and is right at the terminal end of, of Main and Mutton Hollow.
Oh, right, right, okay, got it, okay.
Three quick points that I, these are, deserve their own discussion, each in their own right. But the things that I think I, two things that I think I didn't see in there that I think we should have in there expressly. Like, I think, I think they're in there generally, but not specifically. And I think they should be specifically in there. One is a comment or a goal or something related to either whether it's a fire station out west or increasing, you know, public services, safety services out west, timing response. I don't think the fire station was, if there is a Western fire station that we are desiring in here, I guess is number one. And then number two, Burton Lane, again, I think I could point to some general things, but there wasn't anything that says we need to, we need to solve the Burton Lane connection over I-15. Yeah, so I think I saw that, I forget where it was, I did see that. But I guess I, what I would say is when I, when I meant, or when I saw that, wherever it is, and if we could, somebody knows right where it is, let's look at it. It just didn't seem robust enough to me to solve what I personally, maybe I'm in the minority here, what I personally see as should be a priority and is a problem that, that needs solving in more than just a passing reference. Okay, so there's that. Yeah, so, so that's good, but if it, is it just a bullet point on a bunch of lists that's going to get swallowed up in, in, you know, a bunch of general statements? I don't think it should be there, in my opinion. It should be set aside, like, let's solve this problem. I don't know. And then, we can pause and talk, but the last thing is that I won't keep going into a bunch of other things is this idea of conservation subdivisions. I, I think that's a worthy ideal. I wonder if that's what citizens want? I wonder if that's the right tool to address what citizens want that we heard from in, in the citizen input? I think, to use an example, we don't have any conservation subdivisions per se that I'm aware of in Kaysville. The closest thing would be the Angel Street Soccer Complex and the subdivision around there. Those are quarter acre lots, third acre lots, only because there's six soccer, soccer fields out there or whatever. That's the idea of conservation subdivision. Let's segregate a big parcel of open land and squeeze in the homes, it's at higher density in smaller parts of that development. And I think out west, I think, my personal opinion is the Angel Street Soccer Complex is great and those homes, the fact that they're quarter acre or third acre isn't as big of a problem, in my opinion. But it's been used, in some citizens' opinion out there, as a bludgeon, as a sword, to get quarter acre lots in other areas that maybe we don't want. And if you allow conservation subdivisions, you're going to see that argument made. And maybe that's not what we want. Because there's a, there's multiple goals or policies at least that mention conservation subdivisions. Did we talk about that enough? Is that really what we want? I don't know. I don't think it hasn't been talked about enough. Those are, I'll just leave all my stuff at those three things.
Can I tag on a question to Josh's comments? I was speaking to the section on Coles. And a question for the staff, can you just tell me how the word policy should be interpreted? And the reason that I ask is because we talk about how a general plan is general, that it's not binding. And yet I would read policy as that's binding, you know, that we are bound to follow these things. And, and I had the same question with conservation subdivisions, that's listed as a policy. So I'm just curious about that. And, and I'm just anticipating public comment that these being used against, you know, the discussion as in the general plan, it states that this is a policy if they're opposing, you know, multifamily development or higher density development. So I'm just curious, are those truly policies or are they guidelines? And could we change the word policy if they're guidelines?
Well, I think at the end of the day, what really drives that first and foremost is your zoning code. But prior to that, it has to be zoned. And so, you know, I, I have heard a lot of talk since I've been here about like having a general plan be weaponized against you. And, and I actually kind of head scratched at that a little bit because at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what the general plan thinks, it can say one thing, it can say another thing. It also doesn't mean much at times if the planning commission recommends for or against, as we just recently saw. And I'm not trying to like say that it's irrelevant, but at the end of the day, it's the five elected officials who make the decision. And so if they interpret a general plan or content or a policy or a guideline one way and three of them agree with that, that's what ends up taking place and being implemented. It is, I mean, I, I hope that's an answer, but at the end, right, it takes three votes, so.
Right, but, so they are guidelines, right?
Yeah, I think that you could, you could change that from policy to guidelines.
I think it'd be more helpful for the public.
I believe when I worked in Grand County that we, they were called guidelines in their general plan and not policies.
I think you could even just remove the word and just have 5.1, 5.2, 7.1 under the goals.
I, I like either of those options. I also think in addition to either one of those, you could say, where, the question that says, what is general plan at the beginning under a blueprint for Kaysville future? And I think I had mentioned this in a previous meeting. I think you could add a sentence or two, or even a small paragraph that says, this is what a general plan is, this is what it's not. It is not a mandatory document.
And I, and I, that's one of the only comments I wrote in here is I said, this needs to be upfront. It needs to say the Kaysville general plan is a guideline and is not a mandatory document. And I think that's very important. I think there's a couple of places in here. There's another place in the, on the page seven, I believe it is, where it talks about decisions makers as they evaluate future needs and opportunities, a general plan serves as a blueprint. Shouldn't say blueprint, it should say a guideline. You shouldn't be specific. We're telling you, this is, this is a guideline. This is just a document that helps you make a decision. Don't make your decisions based on this document because all this is information that's given to you. And that's why, and then there was another place in here somewhere on page 16. It talked about, under commercial stuff, it says, Shepherd Lane expansion projects are completed. Small neighborhoods, scale commercial nodes located near highway exits will provide essential services. It should say could provide, not will. I mean, this is, that's what it says, the general plan, I think it's a lot of things here. But I think as the very first of it, it needs to say and be very clear that this general plan is a guideline and not a mandatory document.
That actually was a conversation that Shane and I had as, as I was going through this because there were some things in there that I felt like, that we both felt like came across more as setting an expectation. And we wanted to be cautious with that. So I think those are really great comments, appreciate that.
Me too.
You know, and something like that, it's.
And it's subject to interpretation, depending on your household.
Well, because I'm tired of people saying, your general plan says.
Yes, yep. Yes.
And I'm the one who probably says weaponize because I feel like it is weaponized. And that's not how I look at this. I look at this as a bunch of information compiled into something. I still think it's hugely wordy and long. And I absolutely don't like documents that have data, you know, that have percentages of data because it changes daily. If you look at the housing stuff that's in here and it's already outdated.
When you're done, is it okay if I bring up, we talked about where it says like expectations and things. And I think there is one more section that kind of rubbed me the wrong way. Sorry to cut you off, Mike. And in saying, well, I have a few issues with it. The first one is that I think it's detrimental to our community health.
Where are you at?
Sorry, page 52, kind of towards the bottom there, right above the picture. It says, development activity within the city, especially on the west side, is expected to continue. So it's got expected there to continue expanding the low and medium density neighborhoods within the city. It says west side one more time in there. And I just think it's detrimental to our community as a whole to.
To divide it?
To divide it inward in our general plan. I mean, it's supposed to be a general plan, not this is the plan for West Kaysville and this is the plan for East Kaysville. I mean, if we give ourselves some flexibility there, we could also avoid some of that weaponization that we all love so much.
That's a good point.
One suggestion in that regard is, you know, language is important. Words are important. And general plans I've worked on in the past, we've always tried to use the word that's a living power.
Yeah.
If that way, because, you know, it's constantly these manuals. It needs to be fed, it needs to be looked at, it needs to be constantly considered as a document that is changeable. And it should be, in fact, in general plans I've worked on, it's important to put in there, I think it's really important to put in there that the document needs to be amended and updated and put a suggestion in there. Every two to five years, there should be, like every two years, there can be a order of the product. And then every five years, you make changes because things change fast enough that sometimes by the time you're done doing it, it might even take a year and a half, two years. It's all going to take you to.
Yeah, right.
So what's happened in the last two years? You know, a lot's happened in the last two years. COVID alone.
Yep.
Office space.
You need to make sure this is a document that's, that you can change quickly. And then you tell yourself, you need to look at this thing regularly, don't put it on our shelf. That's the biggest danger with general plans. You get it done, you go, done with that, you stick it on your shelf and you don't follow it.
So just to keep us on track, we've got about 10 minutes.
The changes that the state legislature keeps on mandating every session that we make to our general plan. Never put it on our shelf and not touch it.
We're going to have to change it soon because we've got to include a water element.
Yep.
Pretty quickly here, so, yeah, we're going to have to change it again pretty soon.
Amend.
Amend.
Could I make a few really fast suggestions to the land use, future land use map, map 2.2? So, I don't know what page it's on, but at the corner of Shepherd Lane, right down there, the south, further southeast corner of Shepherd Lane in Kaysville, right across the city border there in Farmington are a bunch of townhomes. Yeah, so that, see that, it's commercial we're showing on here. Yep, that, that right there.
Oh, yeah.
We're showing that as commercial. I suggest we put that as mixed use or multifamily residential. So look on the map up here.
Look up, look up there.
This is the Evan, this is the Evan, it's, it's the Evans. This is the Evans property that's down there, that's right next to that.
See, I'm not sure if that's not multifamily.
I'm not sure if that's not multifamily, I can't tell.
Looks to me like it's commercial.
It's showing commercial.
Looks commercial. Whether, whatever it is, I think it should be either mixed use or multifamily, so that's one. And then, over at the south, further south end of Angel where Western Drive terminates, yeah, right, there's a school there, yep.
Snowhorse.
So, that's going to be right next to the freeway, you can see the corner of the freeway right there.
That's the Charter School.
That's the Charter School.
Charter School, yeah, yeah. I think on the heat map we had, I mean, I know this is data and it maybe has changed, whatever, but the heat map we had, it seemed like people were saying, okay, if we're going to do something multifamily, that four-letter word out west, let's do it there. So, maybe something multifamily or mixed use goes there, because it's, it's not going to be the pastoral fringe of Kaysville anymore, that's right next to the freeway. So, that's the second one. And then the third one is, and I think, I think we've discussed this before, but just to clarify, the Flint property behind Smith's, that seems logical to me to be mixed use.
Correct.
So, those are the three changes I would suggest on the land use map.
Thanks, Josh, appreciate all of the input, everybody, this has been a great discussion. We are almost out of time, so what I would suggest is everyone email their additional suggestions to Melinda, edits and ideas for, for changes, and then Melinda will recirculate, I guess, and try to get a consensus.
Yeah, I'd add to that, if you want to email the ones that we discussed tonight too.
Yes.
That way we would not by chance miss something with the notes that we're taking or have to re-watch the meeting eight times.
I mean, so far, I think I've got the general plan, what it is, what it isn't, living document, Josh's Trail Greenway, and then this last map 2.2 with those three suggestions. Am I missing anything, big items?
Great suggestions and Abby's as well, so, everyone can email you their suggestions and edits. You guys, thank you so much for a great discussion, we appreciate all your hard work. We don't want planning commission to start late though, so...
Mayor, do you want to put a, a due date on those suggestions?
Oh, good idea, Melinda, tell us what you need, great idea.
September 30th, I'm just... Let's see, it's the 23rd, end of the month, June 30th?
Yeah, that's good.
June 30th, okay, sounds good.
And I did, I did pull up that, you know, the state codes definition of general plan, but, you know, we, we can, we could go and use that in there, but, yeah, appreciate the discussion, thanks.
Thanks, everybody, it's 6:55, good luck planning commission, have a great night.
Thank you. Oh, did you, oh, well, it stopped.
It stopped.
That's weird, yeah.
Do we have to officially close this as a, as a work session, or no, we're done? Okay, all right.
All right, closed.
Mayor, we're closed. Yeah, it's just pretty much a... Yeah, it's that one down there, right next to the construction, really.
Oh, right, okay.
There's a chapel, there's a subdivision, and it looks like they're just, looking at maps, they're just, they're just going to be, they're just going to fit.